Good evening. Welcome to the August 18th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with the city clerk. See if he needs to give us any kind of comments?
Yes, I do.
Direction?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak on an item, you must have registered to speak with the clerk's office prior to 4 o'clock PM. If you are in attendance and wish to speak on an item, please register to speak with one of our staff members in the lobby prior to when public comment is called for the item. If you have material to distribute to council, please hand it to me and I will distribute it to the council for you. And I will now take the roll call. Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and start with our invocation. Today, we have Senior Pastor Adam Riojas of At The Cross of Oceanside with us. So please stand. Welcome, Adam.
Ah, thank you.
Mr. Senior Pastor.
Thank you so much.
Grew up in my neighborhood.
Last time I worked with her, she was a councilwoman. And now it's exciting to see her as the mayor. I told her, next time we are together, you're going to be the governor.
I'll be retiring after this.
Of California. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, for this wonderful meeting, God. First and foremost, God, we want to pray for our mayor, Mayor Sanchez, God. I pray, God, that you would continue to bless her and use her, God. What an honor to be here, Lord God, in her presence and in the presence of the rest of the council members, God, and our police department and our fire department, God, and the rest of the folks that are here. We pray for direction, God. We pray for your Spirit to lead every person in this place, God. Thank you, God, for this great city. And thank you that, in the midst of all this chaos, Oceanside is still standing, Lord, and still being a beacon of light. Thank you, Father. We pray this in Jesus' name, and we all say, amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Lord God, the Father, who has granted us this right to live in this world. Thank you. And we're going to begin with proclamations and presentations. And do we have someone here, personnel is going to lead us in this? Because I didn't get the memo that said that I was going to be doing this. But it's very exciting. We get to honor our city employees who have reached certain years of service here in Oceanside. And we're so grateful for everything that they do for us. They represent us out there. They truly are ambassadors. And we have some that have served for very many years. So what we're going to do, because we're still kind of in a COVID situation, we're going to be asking the city employees, one at a time, to come up to the well here, be joined by the department head for pictures. And if you would like to have your family with you, please bring them up as well. So we're going to be doing this one at a time? Yes? Thank you.
All right. So Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers, department directors, and audience, it's a great pleasure that we present to you tonight, employees who have reached the praiseworthy accomplishment of 20 years of service. When your name is called, please come forward. So we're going to start with the fire department. Can the fire chief please come forward and stand next to me? Thank you. Okay, so the first employee tonight will be Adrian Corrales. Adrian began his career with the city of Oceanside as a firefighter/paramedic recruit in May 2001. Adrian became a fire engineer March 2006 and is currently one of our fire captains since promoting in December 2017. Let's congratulate Adrian for 20 years of service to our community. Next, we have Rick Getz. So in the same recruiting class as Adrian, Rick launched his career with the city of Oceanside in May 2001. Rick served as a firefighter/paramedic before becoming a fire engineer in February 2014. As a current fire engineer, Rick continues to serve the city of Oceanside. Let's congratulate Rick on 20 years of service. Thank you, Rick. Okay, so next, we have Ronald Owen. Ron began serving the city of Oceanside in July 2001. During his time as fire safety specialist, Ron has also served fire marshal from March 2013 to September 2013. Let's congratulate Ron on 20 years of service. All right, so we're...
You don't know yet. You don't know.
That's it, for fire. Okay, so next, we will be recognizing the library department. Can the library director please come forward? Okay, so the employee we will be recognizing is Sherry Noel. Sherry began her career with the city of Oceanside as an office assistant in the library department. Sherry has supported many of the library administration functions in various positions. She moved into her current role of administrative secretary in March 2013. Let's congratulate Sherry for 20 years of service. And lastly, we will be recognizing the water utilities department. Actually, no, we have a police officer. Sorry about that. Can we get the police chief up here, please? Joseph Torres. Joseph initiated his career with the city of Oceanside in May 2001 as a police officer recruit. Joseph has dedicated his time to protecting the community as an Oceanside police officer. Let's congratulate Joseph for 20 years of service to our community. All right, so and lastly, we will be recognizing the water utilities department. Can we please have the water utilities director forward? Okay. Joseph Torres. Oh, I'm sorry. Jesus Torres. I'm so sorry. Jesus began his career with the city of Oceanside in August 2001 as a meter service worker one. Jesus has dedicated his career to the water utilities department and currently serves as meter service worker two. Let's congratulate Jesus on 20 years of service. Okay, thank you. So that concludes tonight's service awards. On behalf of the city of Oceanside, congratulations to everyone recognized this evening. Thank you for your continued commitment to our community, and please join me in a round of applause for tonight's event.
Okay, next, we have a special presentation by the San Diego Water Authority. By the way, congratulations, you guys. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
The presentation is on drought preparedness, legislative advocacy, public outreach toolkits, regional workforce efforts. And again, this is the San Diego Water Authority, and I've asked Ms. Carrie Dale, who is the department head for our utilities department, to come and introduce her.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. It's my pleasure to introduce Tish Berg, who is the Assistant General Manager at the San Diego County Water Authority. I'm going to turn it over to Tish, and we're both available for questions if there are any after the presentation.
Thank you, Carrie. And good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me with you tonight. We very much appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you while you deliver safe, reliable water to our collective ratepayers. While we could not have imagined the situation that we're in today with the drought throughout the state, I'm here to share the good news that collectively, we are prepared to continue to serve our region. I'm going to share what we've done to be prepared in that way, on behalf of you, our member agency, as well as some of our other top issues that we're working with and for Many of you know the Water Authority, so this will be a refresher. But for those of you who don't, I'll just provide a quick overview of our role. Since its creation 77 years ago, the Water Authority has served as a San Diego region's wholesale water supplier. Today, we provide water to you and 23 other member agencies throughout the region to serve 3.3 million people and a $253 billion regional economy. Our board consists of 36 board members representing each of the member agencies, and they provide governance to the Water Authority. Our thanks to your representative, Director Boyle, for his leadership and governance. Now, while our region has sunshine and spades, we have few local resources. And that's why we've worked diligently, strategically, and collaboratively to develop a diversified water supply portfolio to serve our region. As we saw during the last two droughts, this approach has prepared us well to make sure that we can continue to serve our customers, our businesses, our agricultural community. Our main service to you comes from providing you with a safe, reliable source of water. For some of our member agencies, this is their only supply source, while for others, it's augmented with local supplies, just like with you, the city of Oceanside. The end result either way is a diversified portfolio that has served the region well. The way we achieved this diversified portfolio is our ratepayers have invested in new supplies, supported changes in water use with programs and incentives, and added to local storage capacity. I'm going to provide a brief overview of what that diversified portfolio looks like, with special attention to our lowest cost supply as well as our newest supply. The Quantification Settlement Agreement, affectionately called QSA, is our lowest-cost supply available here in the region. It is the nation's largest ag-to-urban conservation and transfer agreement, providing high-priority water to San Diego County. It's under contract through 2047, along with the canal lining contract its partner until 2112. These high-priority water supplies are the Water Authority's lowest-cost supplies, and they provide just about half of our water portfolio. The nation's largest seawater desal plant opened in 2015 and provides 50 million gallons per day of drought-proof supplies to the region, and this constitutes just about 8% of our portfolio. Now, in addition to these diversified supplies, the other reason our region is ready is that our collective ratepayers have changed their habits dramatically over the last several decades. Per capita or per-person water use since 1990 has dropped by half. So our residents used to use, on the average, 235 gallons per day, and now they use just something on the order of 120 throughout the region. So it's really their behavioral change that has helped make sure that we can continue to serve them collectively. Now, the way that we achieved this diversified portfolio was with infrastructure, and this are just some of the examples of how we did that. We added to local storage throughout the region. We added a water treatment plant so that we could have more control over the treatment costs to create potable water for your customers. And we also built the infrastructure necessary to move water into and out of Lake Hodges Reservoir, providing us an opportunity to create power on demand for our customers and the region. The Water Authority is proud to advocate for our region and its residents in coordination with and on behalf of our member agencies. We have Sacramento and DC advocacy teams that work closely to make sure, especially during this drought, that we're advocating for funding, educating about regional shovel-ready and shovel-worthy projects, and exploring opportunities to protect our regional agricultural industry. In response to this recent drought, we're especially advocating to make sure that there's not a one-size-fits-all approach and that the region, especially the city of Oceanside, is acknowledged for the investments made in order to create a reliable source of water. Prior to the drought, we co-sponsored and supported legislation with your staff to help support military veterans, to help keep the Oceanside Water Utilities Department from being forced to litigate over revenues collected for fire protection, and incentivize the use of recycled water. We appreciate the support and involvement of your staff on our legislative side, in particular, your Director of Utilities, Carrie Dale, along with Teresa Gomez and Sarah Davis. And then one other thing that we've done to advocate for the regions in particular is through our Integrated Regional Water Management Program. And through that, we've been able to facilitate over $100 million in grant funds to be brought to the region. I just want to take an opportunity to thank Justin Campbell on your staff for his involvement on the Integrated Regional Water Management Regional Advisory Committee. And we very much appreciate the involvement and you allowing your staff to be integrated with us. In addition to advocacy, we also provide outreach and education assistance to the region. Using a variety of approaches, we are able to provide a unified message about the safe and reliable water that you deliver to the residents of the region. We very much appreciate the involvement of Nikki Powell and Sarah Davis from your staff in developing these regional messages that go to our collective ratepayers. There are approximately 4,500 water and wastewater jobs in San Diego region alone. And at this point, more than 40% of that workforce is eligible to retire. So understanding the importance of these positions, these positions oftentimes require certifications that take years to obtain in order to make sure that it's a safe, reliable source of water, we are imagining and looking at about 450 vacancies per year in San Diego region alone. In order to help prepare for that, we've been working with your staff to recruit and bring in veterans, to recruit and educate throughout the region by creating a region-wide website where folks can go to apply for jobs, including for the city of Oceanside. We created an internship program for water and wastewater professionals, as well as provided input into the first regional bachelor's program to help prepare our future executives. But looking back to the tough time, that time back when our customers used to use 235 gallons per person per day, these are just some of the headlines from the droughts that we experienced in the 80s and the 90s. You can see that we were looking at a 50% supply cut, and that was going to include a 90% supply cut to our agricultural community. Now, we were spared that through what was called the Miracle March rains, but we still had a 31% cut to the region. That was going to include a 50% cut to our ag customers. Our board at that time knew how devastating that would be to our farmers and agreed to have a melded cut for the entire region. And so that's why, instead of 20% to non-ag and 50% to ag, there was the melded 31%. Our businesses, elected and community leaders, determined and demanded that our region never be in that position again, and they directed those at the Water Authority to diversify our supplies, be innovative in our infrastructure investments, while continuing to embrace that water conservation ethic I mentioned before. So fast forward to some of the drought headlines from today, it's a very different picture. And the good news is that those investments that I mentioned earlier, as well as the investments I know the city of Oceanside is making now in Pure Oceanside, we have sufficient water supplies for 2021 and beyond. That's what our ratepayer water bills are paying for, safe and reliable water supplies, even when there's not a lot of water to go around. Now, you may have heard that even though our region's prepared, the governor's asking for a 15% voluntary cut. And I'm here to let you know that we fully support the governor in that endeavor. And we do that because it will allow us to look at local, regional, and state solutions to help make sure that the entirety of California has water to suffer both this drought and future droughts. We will continue to work with our stakeholders, including your staff, as well as our advocates in Sacramento, to make sure that we maximize the water supply development in collaboration with other entities. By doing our part to stay water-smart, we will help California weather this extremely dry year and prepare for the uncertainties of the future. Thank you so much for having me with you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, no lights, but I did have one statement and a question for you. First of all, the statement. I am so very, very proud of our city of Oceanside staff that has really been so innovative, forward-thinking with our first-ever-in-the-county pure water project. I can't say enough about our project here and that it is being supported by our community here. It's been so phenomenal. In fact, at Build Out, it will provide 50% of our water, and just something to really, really be proud of. In terms of being innovative for the Water Authority, is the Water Authority pushing these projects forward as like priorities? City San Diego is now doing their pure water project, and they also, at Build Out, believe that they will get to 50% supply within the city of their needs.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's a fantastic question. And the board fully supports the regional recycled water projects that are being put forward by both the city of Oceanside, the city of San Diego, as well as others in East County. They passed a resolution of support for these projects, as well as participating in the local resource program, along with the Metropolitan Water District, to provide funding for these projects. What we are also doing is making sure that every time we draft a letter to our representatives in Sacramento, including the governor, we're talking about making sure that these projects continue to be supported and continue to be acknowledged. And what I mean by that is they continue to be supported by having funding available. There is rumor afoot that while we have not had the drought proclamation, that maybe that means that we shouldn't have funding access for these projects, and we are fighting that at this moment with Department of Water Resources. In addition to that, we want to make sure that the state does a stress test and understands the investments that the city of Oceanside has made to make sure that you have safe, reliable water, 50% of your supply in the future, and that that be considered in any cutbacks that are looked at in the future. So those are the specific ways that we are advocating, in addition to any regulatory support, as well to advance the regulations to streamline and make it easier for these projects in the future.
Okay, one more question. Because having said that, we are fully moving forward on this 60-plus-million-dollar project, which we are very, very concerned about ensuring, you know, that ratepayers are not in any way, shape, or form unduly impacted by whatever water projects that are coming out in the region. And so on our bill, there is the cost from the city of Oceanside and then the cost from the Water Authority. And I do have some concerns about a study that the Water Authority is going forward on that has to do with, say, a duplicate project with respect to the Colorado River conveyance, especially since Monday, there was a historic water shortage declared on the Colorado River that because of the drought, I mean, historic, it's at, what is it, 35% full? I mean, that is, you know, just never thought we could ever get there. So for us, and I guess me personally, there's no way we could do both. Our part, I believe, would be $300 million to our ratepayers, and I just would not be able to ask them to do that when we have our own pure water going forward. So my question is this: will the Water Authority, because I know you're doing a study right now, I think our part of it is, what, $200,000, our part of the study? Will you be revisiting that decision about looking at or going forward on a conveyance project for the Colorado River that would just be a duplicate project and wouldn't even provide more water at all?
Thank you for that question. As directed by the board, staff is currently completing that study and will be coming back in summer of next year so that the board can evaluate whether or not to do anything with the study, including potentially moving forward. I mentioned those QSA supplies being our lowest-cost supplies. The board is going to need to decide whether or not and how to protect those supplies. And this study provides them with the information in order to make those policy decisions on behalf of the region.
Thank you. So that water shortage is not going to impact us at all here in San Diego County?
Thank you for that question. The current water shortage does not affect the high-priority water that the San Diego County Water Authority has access to. The way the water works on the Colorado River is that there would be cutbacks to Nevada and Arizona first, and then California.
And then Mexico, too, right?
Excuse me?
Mexico, too.
Correct. And then when it reaches California, the supply cuts would happen at Metropolitan Water District before they would happen to the supplies that the San Diego region has access to. So these are high-priority water supplies that are currently not at risk.
Thank you. And I see no lights, so thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda is closed session report. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. There was no meeting on Item 1 on the closed session agenda. On Item 2, council met to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Mueller versus city of Oceanside and AT&amp;T et al. Council gave direction, but there's no reportable action under the Brown Act on that item. With respect to Item 2B, council met with regard to a tort claim involving Diocelina Navarro Brito. Again, council did give direction, but there's no final action to report tonight on that item. And finally, council met on conference with real estate negotiator involving the city-owned land located at 1900 Harbor Drive, that's the Jolly Roger premises. Negotiating parties, city of Oceanside and Aloha Partners. Under negotiations are price and terms for a potential lease amendment. Again, there's no action to report on that under the Brown Act. Again, there's no action to report on that under the Brown Act tonight.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar items, and that would be Items 5 through 16. However, 16 has actually been removed, and Mr. Mullen, would you like to address Item number 16? 16 is the adoption of a resolution granting three appeals of Planning Commission Resolution Number 2021 P-20, denying the development plan conditional use permit in variance on a 27.95-acre site on Ocean Ranch Boulevard for a proposed Amazon distribution facility.
Yes, as the council is aware, the applicant provided a letter to the city today withdrawing that application in its entirety before the final action to be taken by the council tonight. So the prior city council action is still part of the public record, but there's no necessity for the city to move forward with findings in light of the withdrawal of the application by the applicant. So there's nothing pending before you tonight.
Thank you. So there's no more project, no more appeals. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez has moved for approval, and Deputy Mayor Keim has...
I'm pulling Item 10.
Oh, sorry. Who was that, who moved for approval? Oh, my apologies. Councilmember Weiss moved for approval. I'm going to also pull Item number 10, just to highlight that, which is the, no, not Item number 10. The, oh, Number 14. I-10 is what has been pulled by Councilmember Rodriguez. 10 is going to be, excuse me, 14 is the elimination of fines of overdue library materials, so I'd like that to be presented. But other than that, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, Number 10, which is approval of Amendment 1 to the professional services agreement with McAllister Institute, and in the amount not to exceed $770,424 for the sobering services center and authorization for the city manager or designee to execute the amendment.
So back in June of 2020, this item was brought before us, and as a part of that contract, there was an effective start date, because the McAllister just moved on a three-year lease of July 1, and it was supposed to go through June 30. A part of that contract with the vendor was two months to operationally set up the facility, and then 10 months to be in operation, providing sobering services for OPD and the hot team and, you know, individuals that are intoxicated and need a safe place to be dropped off to until they get their self back. And so the cost of that contract was $665,000, a portion of it was paid for with Measure X proceeds and pending grant from the county. My questions have to do with the renewal, because there's some discrepancies that I would like addressed. Number 1...
If I could ask, who is staff that's going to be responding to this? Mr. Gosman? Yes?
I hope that somebody from Neighborhood Services and Housing is here.
Okay, I don't see anybody from Neighborhood Services.
I know we're kind of in transit with some...
Oh, here she is. Okay. Before I wanted, before you asked the questions, I wanted to see, make sure that someone was here to listen to your questions.
Well, yeah, and our new director is, wasn't here during all of this, so I can understand if there may be some confusion, but we're talking about the McAllister contract that was set up and signed July 1 through June 30. It outlined two phases. Phase 1 is two months of setup. Phase 2 is 10 months of providing services. McAllister was responsible for providing monthly invoices, as well as quarterly updates on the patients that they've served and quarterly updates on their financials. I've requested from staff a copy of the financials and those updates, and I haven't received them yet, which is fine. I actually asked for those today, so I understand the timing on that. But my concerns have to do with, we executed this lease on July 1, and they were supposed to take two months to set up, and there's a budget for that. They didn't open up until four months and 21 days later, right before Christmas, so pretty much they didn't open up for five months. So there's three months that we're paying them that we didn't get to use their services on a $665,000 contract. My question is, how was that handled? How are we being credited? I want to see the numbers as far as, you know, what happened during that period.
Can I ask, is this a time of the essence issue?
I defer here to sell...
Just want to know, because if possible, it may sound like we may have to continue this item to get those, if you don't have that information with you today, to be able to respond to Councilmember Rodriguez. Mr. Roman?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez. To give you the specific numbers, I'd have to get back to you. We did get your request, and we were able to provide the progress reports. They actually switched to monthly reports, so they're not going to be quarterly reports, and you'll see them shortly. As far as financials, we're still working on putting those numbers together. There was a problem with the permit as far as being able to set up, that's why there was a delay. But to answer your questions about as far as how we're getting credited, there are different ways, and I think part of it is the staffing that was leveraged in our motel program. I know that the staffing that they used weren't necessarily part of scope, but they are, in spite of collaboration, have been providing that extra staffing and as well as added facility use for our program at the motel.
And I appreciate that, and I honestly would like to continue this item, and not only because of that discrepancy of timing on the initial contract. I mean, we're talking about a total combined contract of almost $1.5 million over a two-year period. That's a lot of money, and we helped 122 individuals. I don't know if those were only Oceanside residents. From what I understand, Vista or other areas may have been able to use those facilities, and I know Councilmember Weiss brought up, hey, if they're going to use this, are they going to pay? And then my last question is, is on the last contract, they broke down an itemized of salaries and expenses. On this, it's just, it's asking for $770,000, which is more than the original contract, but the original contract outlined, you know, furniture and setup fees, or, you know, setup costs and office furniture and supplies, and now that they're already set up, the second contract for a year is more, significantly more. And so I'm just wanting, you know, a little bit more details on that. This is a, I believe, they're an invaluable service provider, but I think before we vote on this, we need to be able to have those details.
Okay, so there is a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez to continue this. I just wanted to ask again, is this a time of the essence issue? Can we get this back on the agenda in two weeks?
Yeah, we would be able to do that.
Okay, and there will not be any harm, any gap in services, right? Providing services?
What effect would be the change in scope and how we operate? To answer your question, as far as increasing capacity, we wanted to be able to serve a higher group within keeping the same parameters of the permit, and we also want to make sure that we're utilizing the resource that we have and increase efficiency. We increased the budget to add, hire trained staff to be able to deal with clients that are more than just intoxicated with alcohol, so...
No, I understand that. I just believe this body should be equipped with a breakdown of that and not just a line item amount. And so if you're saying that you're going to have to cut services if we don't approve this today, I'm assuming there's enough within the city manager's discretion of $50,000 to cover any shortcomings. I just, I would like some more information before we vote on this, and I think if two weeks can work, we, you know, let's push that off two weeks.
Okay, I actually did get a chance to look at this, and I understand that adjustments had to be made because, to make up for that time period, and that more services were provided, as Mr. Roman has been describing, but I thought that we would have, this would not be a time of the essence situation.
No, this is not a time of the essence issue.
Okay, he's just talking about if this was denied.
Yeah.
If we continue, the scope would remain the same.
I'll go ahead and second the motion to continue, so we can bring this back, and you can get all that lovely information in great detail to Councilmember Rodriguez, and then we can move on.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, let's vote on this item, on a motion to continue to time certain, date certain next council meeting, September 1. Is it September 1? Yeah.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Okay, and if we can do Number 14, which is something, you know, pretty big for the library, it's approval of the elimination of fines for overdue library materials, and is this an amnesty program, or is this a permanent situation?
Mayor Sanchez and Councilmember Sherry Cosby, Library Director, the item before you tonight is asking your approval to eliminate fines for library materials moving forward. It is not an amnesty program, it is an ongoing, forever-no-more-fines-for-library-materials.
And you feel that people will still bring in the books and that what has, I read your report, that it actually stops people from using the library as much as they could if they were like a day late or two days late, whatever. So I have to say, congratulations on coming to that decision. The funds, it will not be such a big impact. In fact, it's a pretty small impact, so I'm going to go ahead and move approval and just say thank you very much for, and let everyone know that they can come back with their library books, you don't have to pay a fine for them being over, for them being late.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Yay. Okay, we still have time to take up our general item for the evening, and that is Item Number 17, which is Authorization to Awarded Contract, that's a lot to say, to Spectrum Services Group of Sacramento, in the amount of $2.3 million for the construction of the Jones Road Tenant Improvements Project, for construction, management, and inspection services, approval of Amendment 2 to the professional services agreement with MBN Group Architects, Inc., in the amount of $82,871, for a total contract amount of $199,684, for design support during construction, approval of a budget appropriation in the amount of $300,000 from the water-fixed asset replacement unrestricted fund balance, authorization for the city engineer to approve change orders for up to $234,082 on the construction agreement, and finally, authorization for the city manager to execute the agreements and amendment upon receipt of all supporting documents. And this is a report by Lindsay Leahy, our Principal Water Engineer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Lindsay Leahy with the Water Utilities Department, here tonight to present the Jones Road Tenant Improvement Award of Contract. As the mayor mentioned, staff is recommending an award of contract to Spectrum Services in an amount not to exceed $2,340,815 for construction services. Approve a professional service agreement with MKN in an amount of $318,300 for construction management and inspection services. Approve Amendment 2 to the professional service agreement with MBN Group Architects for $82,871 for engineering services during construction, appropriation of $300,000 from the fixed asset replacement fund, and authorization for the city engineer to approve change orders up to 10% of the contract value. The Jones Road facility was constructed in the early 1930s. This is one of the original water facilities within the City of Oceanside and currently houses the meter services group. There's an abandoned reservoir, as well as a sewer lift station at this facility, and additionally, the fire training center is co-located at this facility. In November of 2018, an agreement was executed with MBN for the design of the Jones Road Tenant Improvements for the water, or for the meter services group. And in April of 2019, Amendment 1 was executed to add a 700-square-foot addition and to include a meter test bench with this project. The addition of the meter test bench would allow us to improve the meter testing program within the department to better align with the state water audit standards. Additionally, the tenant improvements would be, would allow for a permanent workspace for the meter services group, which have been located in a temporary building on the property for several years at this point. Staff advertised the project for construction, and two bids were received and opened publicly on June 3, 2021. The engineer's estimate was just under $2.3 million. The apparent low bidder on bid day, or just shortly after bid day, did request to withdraw their bid, and what this request was received within the allotted time, so the city has to honor this request. That left Spectrum Services Group as the lowest apparent low bidder. Staff evaluated their bid, and they are the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a bid of $2,340,815. In parallel, a request for proposals was issued for construction management services, and two proposals were also received on June 3. These proposals were evaluated by staff, and MKN ranked the highest based on qualifications and responsiveness. The current available balance in the project account is $2,708,877. The total estimated construction cost, including allotting a 10% contingency value to be authorized upon approval, would be $2,976,68. Keep in mind that any remaining construction contingency not used by the remainder, by the completion of the project would return to fund balance if the $300,000 was appropriated. And the funding source for this project is the Water Fixed Asset Replacement Fund. And with that, staff recommends that council award the three contracts, appropriate a $300,000 fund from the Water Fixed Asset Replacement Fund, and authorize the city engineer to approve change orders up to 10% of the contract value. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. I understand there are no requests to speak from the public?
That is correct.
Okay, so to council, Deputy Mayor Keim?
I'll move approval.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, no lights, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Do we have our advanced written request to speak?
Mr. Tate is here.
Not on the agenda?
Yes, he is here.
Mr. Tate, okay. I believe, Mr. Tate, were you here last? Come on down. We unfortunately didn't get to our advanced requests to speak, folks, because we had such a long meeting, and I wanted to call you up now. So, Mr. Tate, you have five minutes. You are speaking on limited parking in the Ventana at El Corazon.
Yes, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thanks, Pastor, for the invocation, it was wonderful. Thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, definitely Councilmember Weiss, thank you guys for having us, and good evening. I want to start off by saying, I'm Jamarus Saez, as discussed earlier, I recently retired from the Marine Corps after 21 years, and to be here today to participate in democracy in a different arena is a welcome experience. My wife and I, after retirement, we decided to buy a home here in Oceanside because we feel like it's very conducive to properly raising a child, and adds to contribute to, you know, elected officials, first responders, and its residents. So again, thank you, guys. The reason why I'm here to talk today is about the limited parking issues that's going on in the Ventana community at El Corazon. On the little background, as I think I passed on earlier, on Page 1, there are 70 homes with two big garages. Out of those 70, 70 homes, the breakdown is 34 bedrooms, 34 four-bedrooms, 22 three-bedrooms, 14 three-bedrooms, which is a sum of 244 rooms. For the parking situation, there are, for its two-car garages, there's 140 plus an additional 20 guest parking, which is a sum of 1/6. So as you can look at those numbers, you can see how there's an issue with the parking in our community. And the big, the main question is, when homeowners purchase a home in that community, do they know about this parking? Yes, but the unforeseen circumstances, which is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, which is a lot of students were forced to move back home, call them boomer... a lot of students were forced to move back home, call them boomerang kids, they went off to college and because of the pandemic was forced to come back home, which exacerbated the problem that we have in our community. Addition to that, some of the homeowners are now working from home, teleworking. And what this, what ended up happening because of that is childcare had to come in the home. Some of the homeowners who work from home, they have coworkers who come over in order to do cooperation from time to time. The biggest thing that's most troubling is the affordable house, housing situation that we have. I know some of the homeowners in El Corazon, Ventana community, have opened up their homes to rent a room, maybe to help one person, another person here in Oceanside, or to make sure their house went into foreclosure due to the economic crisis that's going on, lack of jobs. So pretty much what we're, we're respectfully requesting is not for a parking lot to be built, is just to do what we have started doing, which is to have street parking right there in the front of our community, which is El Corazon Drive. If you look on page three, depicted that on page three.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we do have staff here, Mr. Ghostman, if you could meet with him, or I see Mr. Borrego in the back, he'll, he'll, he can meet with you. On advanced request to speak, or on anything that's not on the agenda, we are not able to comment, or, you know, render a decision or anything?
Understood.
So, but we do have staff here and he'd be happy to speak with you. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Ooh, God, Marine.
Okay, so I don't see Mr. Wally Stevens here?
No, he's.
Is he, he's not by Zoom?
We checked the lobby, Mr. Stevens is not here with us.
Okay, we'll come back to that. So we'll, I guess we'll go ahead and begin with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda for 10 minutes. And we have eight, did you say?
We currently have eight people to, that are registered on Zoom, and we have a total as of now, 14 in total.
Okay, three minutes each.
Okay. Our first public comment off the agenda is from John Botorf, to be followed by Kelly McCormick, to be followed by Barbara Gordon. And we are getting Mr. Botorf online, and you're good to go.
Awesome, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. My name is John Botorf with CleanItForKids.org.
Hold on.
We're cranking up your volume there.
Hold on.
All right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll restart your time.
Okay, thank you. My name is John Botorf with CleanItForKids.org, and I am asking the city council to remove the fire rings at the Oceanside Harbor and Beach and stop the recreational fires. Smoke from these fires covers the harbor area on a regular basis, makes it hard to breathe and burns the eyes and throat. People burn things like furniture and trash for hours, littering the area not only with smoke, but with hot coals that can burn people and start fires. These coals can burn for 24 hours. I spoke to the harbor authority and they don't want the fires either. It is a health hazard and a liability risk. Wood smoke is pollution. Wood smoke contains thousands of chemicals, including known irritants, carcinogens, suspected carcinogens, and substances that are linked to birth defects along with very fine particles called particulate matter, or PM. Burning wood produces toxins like benzene, dioxins, formaldehyde, acrylene, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which are known carcinogens. They not only cause cancer, but are linked to problems with fetal and child development, including lower birth weight and premature birth. And there is much more to wood smoke than just toxic chemicals. Studies show particulate matter from wood fires is incredibly harmful to humans. One of the main components of smoke is called PM 2.5, which can travel for miles in the air. Roughly 1/20th the diameter of a human hair, PM 2.5 passes through the nose, mouth, and lungs, and makes their way into the bloodstream. From there, they can harm the heart and lungs, increasing the risk of stroke, heart attacks, and respiratory problems. Do you know, air pollution is linked to causing type 2 diabetes? A 2016 study found 14% of the world's diabetes cases were caused by air pollution. Cigarette smoking is banned because of the health effects, so why are we allowing beach fires? Smoke is smoke. It's pollution that hurts people's health. San Diego gets an F in ozone and a D in particle pollution from the American Lung Association. We have the seventh worst ozone in the nation here in San Diego. On top of that, our state faces constant wildfires. The beach should be a safe place where people can come for fresh, clean air. People don't want to come to the beach for smoke and coughing. Please protect our, our air and our health and remove the fire rings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Kelly McCormick.
Good evening, this is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator and a parent. You may have seen the ads recently from the group called Parents Against Vaping E Cigarettes that say, quote, "Back to school, not back to Juul." It's a reminder that our kids are being targeted by the tobacco industry. It's widely recognized that flavors entice kids into using e-cigarettes, which contain even higher levels of nicotine than traditional cigarettes. Proof can be seen in the large number of teens who vape flavored e-liquids with names like strawberry shortcake, blue raspberry, cotton candy, and dummy bear. It's no coincidence the marijuana industry is using the same strategy with flavored marijuana vapes. Tobacco giant Altria is a major player in the marijuana industry with multi-billion dollar investments in all levels, from farms to the final product. Altria is also the maker of Marlboro cigarettes, among others, and owns Juul, the company largely credited with launching the teen vaping epidemic. Tobacco companies have decades of experience in creating addictive products and youth-oriented marketing campaigns. That same strategy is evident in the marketing of marijuana. Class action lawsuits in the 80s confirmed that tobacco companies intentionally studied the habits and preferences of teens and designed products to be addictive. It's important to add that marijuana e-liquids commonly contain 80% to 90% pure THC, which also is addictive and can lead to serious mental health disorders, especially when used by people under the age of 25. Flavored marijuana should be held to the same standard as flavored tobacco. On behalf of parents like myself, I urge you to consider adopting a ban on flavored marijuana products. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Teri Ann Skelly, I mean, Barbara Gordon's up first, to be followed by Teri Ann Skelly, to be followed by Joe Hill.
Thank you very much, Council. My name is Barbara Gordon, and my, my work with Hispanic youth students has brought me here tonight.
Could you hold on just for a second?
We took care of that.
Okay, could you start again?
Yeah. You may go.
Okay, again, my name is Barbara Gordon. My work with Hispanic high school students has brought me here tonight. I am very concerned for the health and well-being of the young people as the city continues to permit marijuana businesses. When you commercialize marijuana, you are essentially promoting it. Every day in Oceanside, whether you're at the beach, walking down the sidewalk, you can smell marijuana. I wish the city council could do something to alleviate this behavior. This council has facilitated the normalization of marijuana. We know from our Healthy Kids Survey that marijuana use among our high school seniors has continued to increase each year. Parents are asking you to please recognize and take into consideration the negative effects of marijuana is having on our young people. We cannot afford to lose our youth to this trend in marijuana use with the increased risk of adverse health outcomes related to this drug. My hope as a public official that you would understand why we do not need more marijuana businesses in the city. We are trying to raise healthy kids and need your support. Please do not promote policies that advance the marijuana industry over our kids. Thank you for letting me speak this evening.
Thank you. We'll take one more person and then we'll go to our time certain.
Teri Ann Skelly is not on the line, so we'll move on to Joe Hill. Joe, we're getting you ready. And if you're going to mute yourself, you'll be good to go.
Oh, we're good?
You're good.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. Joe Hill, 22-year Oceanside resident. Just an information update to let everyone know about the negative feedback from primarily District 1 voters and some other districts about Councilmember Cory Jensen Page. It's increasing on a daily basis. Her own personal financial irresponsibility and integrity are still in question. How can our city have a person that now owes $52,810 in delinquent property taxes, has failed to pay her city TOT taxes, and was in bankruptcy for 10 years, which had ended just before her appointment, make any type of financial decisions for any part of our city? Shame on Ms. Jensen for not divulging these things out of her appointment paperwork, and shame on the city for having nothing in place in the appointment process to vet someone financially. One voter had two very blunt comments. One comment was, "What kind of example does a council member set by not paying the property taxes?" The second comment was, "The salary for the council member position is in all probability not going to satisfy her personal financial obligations unless there's a promise of additional financial help from some other source outside of the city. Ms. Jensen should just resign for the good of the Oceanside and sell real estate full-time to get herself out of her overdue debts." And by the way, why wasn't Ms. Jensen in attendance at the recently held Junior Sayo Amphitheater and Community Center Information Meeting in her district, District 1? Apparently she doesn't care, just like the Brook Street pool. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and return after the public hearing item, which is item number 18. And so we're going to go ahead and start that, that's, and item 18 is introduction of an ordinance amending Article 36 of the Oceanside zoning ordinance in Chapter 33 of the Oceanside City Code to remove the 500-foot separation requirement from a residential district if an intervening freeway, I-5, or state highway, SR 76 or SR 78, is located between the proposed tattoo establishment and that residential district. The text modification also includes removing Section 3601.1 and 3601.2 from Article 36 and adding Appendix A. The text modification would remove all of Chapter 33 Tattoo Establishment of the City Code, Tattoo Establishments Regulations, and the applicant is the city of Oceanside. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members with respect to constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only. Just staff.
Staff. Oh, and I had one conversation with, with attorney, Mr. Marco Gonzalez.
Staff.
Staff.
Mr. Nevada, do we have any correspondence or petitions?
We did not receive any correspondence or petition on this item.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start the testimony with Stephanie Servantes, Planner 2.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Stephanie Servantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the Tattoo Establishment, Zon and City Code Amendment. Staff recommends that the city council and Community Development Commission introduce an ordinance amending Article 36 of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance, CA 21-00001, and delete Chapter 33 of the Oceanside City Code to amend the establishment of tattoo establishments. Tattoo establishments are currently allowed in community commercial, general commercial, limited commercial, coastal general commercial, downtown Sub District 1 and 2, limited industrial, and general industrial zoning district. There is also a city council-approved zon amendment that allows tattoo establishments in additional downtown sub-districts, which include Sub Districts 6A, 6B, 6C, 7B, 11, and 13. That zon amendment has yet to be certified by California Coastal Commission. There are currently four active facilities at 408 and 604 Mission Avenue, at 423 South Coast Highway, and at 1950 Oceanside Boulevard. And there are two other potential project sites at 1413 North Coast Highway and 3753 Mission Avenue. The proposed tax amendment to Article 36, excuse me, the proposed amendment was initiated by the applicant of 1413 North Coast Highway in February of this year. The applicant had actually been in communications with city staff since 2020, but a formal application was not received until this year. In March of 2021, the city received a business license application for 3753 Mission Avenue, which was approved in April of this year. Foot enforcement was called regarding the site in May of 2021. Staff discovered that the previously issued regulated use permit on the site was rescinded in connection with approval of the business located at 604 Mission Avenue. In July of 2021, the city entered into an abatement agreement with the business owners at 3753 Mission Avenue. The proposed tax amendment to Article 36 would waive the 500-foot separation requirement from a residential district if an intervening freeway or state route is located between the proposed location and the residential district. The modification also includes removing Section 3601.1 and 3601.2 and adding them as an.
The public comments made by John Botorf and our cleaner for City.
If you could just wait there. Okay, you can continue, sorry. This is a test.
The modification also includes removing Chapter 33 Tattoo Establishments from the City Code. The modification requires a local coastal plan amendment due to Article 36 being applicable The proposed tax amendment to Section 3604C would read as, "The regulated use enumerated as P tattooing establishment in Section 3602 above shall not be located closer than 500 feet to any other tattooing establishment, or be located within 500 feet of any residential district or any sensitive land use enumerated in Section 3604B, 1, 2, or 4. However, a regulated use enumerated as P tattooing establishment in Section 3602 above may be located closer than 500 feet to a residential district provided there is an intervening freeway, Interstate 5, or state highway, State Route 76 and 78. No other location requirements shall apply to tattooing establishments. No other changes to buffer are proposed, no changes to zoning districts are proposed, no changes to the application process are proposed as part of this zon amendment. The city's commercial and industrial districts run along the city's main transportation quarters, which abut residential districts and limit opportunities for businesses that must adhere to the buffer regulations. The city's existing freeways and state routes offer limited opportunities for pedestrian traffic. Chapter 36 of the City Code is currently not being administered, and staff believes that the administrative regulated use permit process is adequate to review new facility." The proposed tax amendment would affect five areas in the city. Area 1 is on North Coast Highway near Interstate 5. The area is zoned to Sub Districts 6A, 6B, and 6C. Tattooing establishment use in these districts is pending coastal certification of the zoning amendment. The current uses in this area include typical commercial uses such as retail eating establishments, hotel, hotel uses, and it also includes residential uses. Area 2 is near Interstate 5 and Oceanside Boulevard. The site is zoned community commercial and is currently used as Sprinter track. Area 3 is near State Route 78 and College Boulevard. The site is zoned community commercial and is currently developed as an auto dealership. Area 4 is near State Route 76 and Mission Avenue. The site is zoned community commercial and is currently vacant. Area 5 is near State Route 76, Mission Avenue, and El Camino Real. The site is zoned general commercial and is currently a shopping center. Staff recommends that the city council, Community Development Commission, introduce an ordinance amending Article 36 of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance, CA 21-00001, and delete Chapter 33 of the Oceanside City Code to amend the establishment of tattoo establishments. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. This is the time for public comment. If you wish to make a statement about this item, please come forward. You do not have to have signed up to speak. You have, you can actually speak for up to three minutes.
Then we do have three registered speakers that were here.
Oh, you do have three registered speakers, my apologies.
Our first speaker is Robert Hill, to be followed by Jaclyn Von Musser, to be followed by Freddie Von Musser, and then if anybody else would like to comment, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium. welcome to come up to the podium. And Mr. Hill?
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Robert Hill. I am an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Freddie V's American Tattoo Parlor, located at 3753 Mission Avenue. It is one of the parlors that obviously would be impacted by this zoning amendment. As indicated on the screen, both Jaclyn and Freddie are present as well. They are the owners of the parlor, and they will be speaking separately. I'll try to be brief. I think the circumstances surrounding Freddie V's predicament are likely known to the council members or set forth in the staff report, and Ms. Servantes addressed them as well. They applied for a license. They were granted a license. They did everything right. And then they were told after the fact, now that they've been operating since June, after they signed a five-year lease, after they expended more than tens of thousands of dollars of operational expenses, that there was a mistake made. And now, unless this zoning amendment passes, they're going to be forced to close. And I think it's just important to recognize that they didn't do anything wrong. They were following the rules. They applied for the license appropriately, but they now risk losing everything. And if that happens, they're going to be left with no recourse but to ask the city and pursue some sort of claim against the city for compensation and damages for what they went through and how their business is going to be destroyed. They obviously don't want to do that, and that's why they're here today and encouraging and hoping that this amendment passes and they can continue to operate their business. And Ms. Servantes did touch on this, and it was addressed in the staff report as well, but I do want to just make it clear that this zoning amendment wasn't initiated by Freddie V's. They didn't ask the city to draft something like this. And in fact, it was already being drafted in connection with the other potential site, the one on North Coast Highway, before the city even recognized that they had made a mistake in regard to Freddie V's. I was at the Planning Commission hearing, and there seemed to be kind of a misconception that this was something that this zoning amendment was the city's way to try to fix their prior mistake. And that's not the case at all. That was already being worked on. It was already being contemplated before the city even recognized that the Freddie V's facility would be impacted by it. But they obviously will be impacted by it greatly. I think that the reason, my understanding at least, I don't work for the city, but just being at the Planning Commission hearing, is that the city planner recognizes and understands that tattoo parlors do have First Amendment protections, that there cannot be unduly burdensome zoning regulations placed on these types of businesses versus other businesses that are allowed to operate. And this amendment is simply a way to allow two additional businesses. That's it. Out of the five potential areas that Ms. Servantes addressed, there's only two that are really viable areas, one of which is Freddie V's and one of which is the North Coast Highway location. And that's all. And I think that that's reasonable. It's a narrowly tailored proposal. I think it makes sense, and I certainly would ask it to be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jaclyn Von Musser, to be followed by Freddie Von Musser.
Hi, I'm Jackie Von Musser. I'd actually like to correct my husband's name. It was a business associate that actually put his name down instead of his own. So my husband does not wish to speak. Our business associate, Ron Zarowski, does, if that's okay. So I am Jackie Von Musser. I'm the owner of Freddie V's American Tattoo, along with my husband Freddie, located at 3753 Mission Avenue. I spoke at the city planning meeting on July 26, so I don't think it's necessary to go over what I spoke of. If you've not seen the meeting, I ask that you watch it. But basically, I'm here to defend my business due to an error that the city made when they approved our license. The zon amendment, Article 36, is imperative that it pass for us. Our business that just opened June 3 is now being threatened of being closed down, which is alarming considering that the city did approve us by mistake. Also to mention, this competitor and his attorney, who I believe happens to be family, as he mentioned, because he did walk into my tattoo shop about a month ago, they're looking to sue me for the city's mistake, as well as the City of Oceanside. So this is putting a lot of stress on me. Unfortunately, the stress on my family, my tattoo artists, my husband and I, I just wanted to let you know how awful it would be if my business is taken away and forced to close due to a city error or a clean and sober business. We have combat military veteran as tattoo artists. We have three combat veterans that were newly hired to work for us. I signed a five-year lease agreement, so I'll be out $228,000 if I'm forced to close. And I don't have any plan on breaking my word or my contract, messing up my credit, or having to litigate again with my poor little landlord. I don't like breaking my word, so I think the city should be liable if I'm forced to close. On a better note, last Friday, 13, it's traditional for all tattoo shops to do Friday the 13th discounted tattoos, at least most tattoo shops. So we had a huge crowd. We had over 150 new walk-in clients just in one day to offer discounted tattoos on Friday the 13th. 150 clients wanting tattoos. We had a four-to-five-hour wait with only three tattoo artists. I can't hire more artists right now because of this issue until it's resolved, although I've had two artists reach out. So these clients, they did. They waited four to five hours, and we worked up until the wee morning hours to get every single person done, and people came back the next day. Clients were happy and grateful. We were told we were the only tattoo shop in the City of Oceanside that was doing traditional Friday the 13th tattoos. So I know I'm out of time, but you know, we think about our community.
Thank you.
And I want to say one last thing. This whole process has been delaying me having breast surgery for malignant tumors. I have had to reschedule to take three malignant tumors out of my breasts.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
So I hope it gets resolved quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no more registered speakers that wish to speak, but this is a public hearing.
Yes, it is a public hearing. I started to say that. My apologies that I did not realize you had actually signed up. Okay, so you did get to speak first. But this is a public hearing. This is the public comment portion of this public hearing. And so you can come up, give your name, and you can speak for three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Evening, everyone. My name is Ron Zarowski. I'll keep this very brief. I have known Jackie and Freddie for a couple of years. They have another tattoo establishment up in San Clemente. And I'm not just friends with them, but I'm also business partners, in a sense. I have an ATM business, and so I have ATMs and various establishments throughout the city, mainly barber shops, but also tattoo shops. So I have a little bit of a window into the numbers of what tattoo shops do. Most of their clients are Marines, and they pull out thousands of dollars, sometimes every day. On Friday, it was $3,300, plus the amount of money that they bring in with cash. It's a cash-only business. So if they were to close the shop, it would have a severe impact financially, I can attest, not just to two hard-working, honest citizens of the City of Oceanside, but also, as Jackie mentioned, to three veterans that work there. They deserve a place to work. They've done nothing wrong. This was an error, an oversight by the city. It needs to be corrected, but it shouldn't be, in my opinion, be corrected to the detriment of two fine citizens who are simply trying to make an honest living and to three very decorated, honorable veterans that work in their shop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I see no one else rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the hearing and come to the council. Councilmember Rodriguez, followed by Deputy Mayor Keim.
Thank you for coming and explaining this situation. If staff can address -- I'm just curious on the -- what happened with this applicant? They're stating that they applied, everything was moving forward, they signed a lease and spent money. I'm a small business owner. I know that's a lot of risk and expense and stress. And so what was wrong on our end, if any? I just wanted to hear staff's side of that.
Sure. I'll go ahead and address that, Mayor and Council. What happened is there was a prior tattoo regulation in the City of Oceanside several years ago, and the former operator of the site where the Von Musers are located now applied for a new conditional use permit to come downtown. That was initially denied. Eventually, a new location was found on Mission Avenue, and the council ultimately approved that. One of the conditions of approval, I understand, was the rescission of the prior CUP. And the reason for that was because there was a provision within the municipal code, not our zoning ordinance, capping the number of tattoo establishments in the city. So we wanted to keep the correct number. My understanding is that that condition of approval was not recorded in the Development Service Department's E-Track-It system. So when this application came in, and mind you, a few years later, we had a gentleman who wanted to open an establishment in South Oceanside, and we had significant issues with that applicant. So did the police department. We did not want that one to go forward, as the council may be aware. We rewrote our zoning regulations at that time to comply with a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal decision, because that is the more recent decision that said that tattooing activity was constitutionally protected. We didn't think that numerical cap would survive judicial review, so we didn't enforce it anymore. But the answer to your question, at the end of the day, there were a lot of regulatory changes, but that condition of approval rescinding the prior CUP was not recorded in the department's E-Track-It system. So when the planner was checking that system, she didn't see it, and she assumed that the prior conditional use permit ran with the land. I think that's the answer to your question. We then have worked cooperatively on this amendment at no cost to the applicant to try and remedy the situation and fold it in with the prior application that was already pending.
Thank you for that explanation, and thank you for your patience and wanting to work in our city. We strongly support small businesses, and it's unfortunate that circumstances like this come up and complex situations. So I'm 100% on board with staff's approval. I look forward to getting you guys up and running as soon as possible and serving our military population. And again, from my seat, I apologize for what you guys went through, and we look forward to many years of successful business in our city. Thank you.
So that's a motion to introduce the ordinance. And Deputy Mayor Keim?
If that's a motion, then I'll second it.
Okay. No other lights.
Mayor, I'll need to title this, if you don't mind.
If I could just say a few words. Okay. It is unfortunate that this happened, because I did receive a call from the attorney for the other tattoo shop who had to rescind or give up his other license, because yes, it would have run with the land. And he could, and he felt that he could have sold that license and gotten some kind of a profit. And so unfortunately, things happened the way they did. He feels he's been harmed. You feel that you've been harmed, and hopefully this will -- tattoos are considered now speech. It is protected under the First Amendment, so of course, there are different standards that apply now to tattoo shops. And I believe that what staff has brought forward is going to keep us well within the rule of law and be consistent with all requirements. So I am going to support this. Our deepest apologies. Stress is a horrible thing. Listen, I haven't been able to sleep for a couple of days, and I'm like, I don't know why. Too much stress here. So anyway, thank you very much. And Mr. City Attorney--
I'll title that. I just want to make one comment, and that is that the business license that was erroneously issued on the basis of that revoked CUP or rescinded CUP has been mutually -- we have mutually agreed that it has been revoked in that abatement agreement. So when this is approved, the applicant will need to apply for an administrative regulated use permit. We've laid that out in the abatement agreement. So we're no longer relying upon that rescinded CUP. We will be relying upon the zon text amendment and in compliance with our current permitting requirements.
That's what I had understood.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, and I'll go ahead and title this. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, amending Chapter 33 of the Oceanside City Code and Article 36 of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance.
Please vote.
Motion approved. I vote.
Good luck. And I did want to say that the other shop had said -- the other attorney had said, listen, he doesn't want to make a big deal. You know, this is something that he supports tattoo businesses, so that's why he's not here. So thank you very much, and good luck. So back to public comments on off-agenda items. We were left off at, did you find Terry Ann Skelly?
We could not find Terry Ann Skelly. She is not on the Zoom.
So Suzanne Hume?
So we'll move on to Suzanne Hume, to be followed by Judith Pineta, to be followed by Sandy Beal, and then we'll move to our in-person speaker, starting with Judy Wilson. So Suzanne, if you're there, you could start.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Santos and City Council. My name is Suzanne Hume, and I'm the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. Thank you so much for going fine-free to stop the library fines for overdue books. And thank you so much for asking good questions when Amazon Distribution Center was trying to locate an Oceanside near three schools, which would have added a lot of air pollution, traffic, and drivers hurrying to deliver packages. As you heard, and I absolutely support the comments made by John Botwurf with Cleaner for Kids, as you heard, the American Lung Association has given Sandy Ull County an F in ozone. Ozone is smog mixed with sunlight and D in particulate matter that harms our lungs, our heart, and our future. So thank you so much for working for solutions. We must pass a 100% renewable energy goal, not 75%, and we must listen to the science. So we need to reduce our air pollution and our greenhouse gases. So excited. You'll hear from Judith. She's not going to talk about no idling signs tonight, but she's made some fabulous ones and is excited. We need to change the way we're doing things. We have to have safe air to breathe, stop the fire pits, the fire rings at the beach. That would be great. Also, pesticide drift. As you know, I was poisoned by pesticide drift. West Coast Tomatoes is right there by Mission Vista High School, within a half of a mile in some directions. They're using glyphosate. We have gone through over thousands and thousands of data entry from the county and public records. When you see whether it is being used, you are not going to want to renew that lease. Plus, they had worker violations in 2019. Thank you so much for stopping synthetic turf and not putting it in Buchanan Park and MLK. There are athletes that are dying because synthetic turf can get to 200 degrees. So we need to protect our athletes and our kids from toxic chemicals. As you know, 6 PPD in the chemical in tires is killing up to 90% of our co-host salmon. So we've got to make changes. Also, we need to think about doing light shows instead of fireworks. Too many of our people are accidentally starting fires and getting burned. There's so many things that we can do with natural solutions. Excited to partner with you guys. Please check out our Cleaner for Kids action plan on the homepage. We've got lots of lists there, and people working really hard to bring about great changes. So as John said, smoke is smoke, and we've got to do whatever we can to reduce toxic pollution, greenhouse gases, and work for a better future. The IPCC report, Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report is out, and we must take climate action now. So thank you again so much for all you do, and thank you to the fabulous staff. You're amazing. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Judith Pineta, to be followed by Sandy Beal, to be followed by Judy Wilson in person. Judith, whenever you're ready. Can you unmute yourself? Oh, perfect. Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, hello. My name is Judith. I'm an incoming freshman in college and a youth board member artist at Cleaner for Kids. And we are asking Oceanside to take some specific actions to protect our air, water, and climate. This includes passing a 100% renewable energy goal, not 75%, allowing Oceanside to be a part of a CCE, and purchase renewable energy from wind, water, and solar with battery storage instead of burning dirty fossil fuels. Also, people need to know that natural gas stoves emit air pollution and methane. Also, people need to know that natural gas stoves emit air pollution and methane, a greenhouse gas. The IPCC report states that we must take immediate climate action to reduce the warming of our atmosphere, ocean, and land. To protect clean air, we need to let people know that wood smoke is harmful for their lungs. Sorry. Please stop allowing the burning of fires in the fire pits at the beach and harbor. People need clean air to breathe, and these fires produce smoke that harms people. Fires are dangerous. Each year in the U.S., over 1.1 million burn injuries require medical attention, and approximately 400... Sorry. 450... Sorry. 4,500... Sorry. 4,500 of these people have died. Sorry. Right now, there are 16 fires burning in the state of California. Two years ago, our youth, a severe burn victim, came to a city council meeting and asked you to please stop the fire pits in Oceanside. He had to get 16 surgeries, and that's just on one hand. The fire pits are dangerous, and no one has done anything about the toxic smoke and air pollution, or to protect kids from being burned, or the city from liability. Speaking of fires, can Oceanside please have light shows instead of fireworks? Because fireworks can start fires. In 2019, about 19,500 fires started. In 2020, in the U.S., over 15,000 people had to go to the ER, and 18 people's lives ended. With all these fires burning in our state, we must make changes now. With a light show, we can hire local workers. We don't need to start fires, because fireworks emit toxic chemicals such as lead, titanium, copper, leading to air and water pollution. It is truly devastating to see these tons of plastics in our oceans, waterways, parks, streets, and many more, and not to mention balloons. We need to take action, not only to protect our animals, but our environment, us, and future generations. We have more ideas and action plan on our homepage at CleanEarthForKids.org. Thank you. This is Judith from Clean Earth for Kids.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Sandy Beal. And we'll move to our in-person speaker, starting with Judy Wilson, to be followed by Robert Markley and Shelley Parker. Sandy, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Council members, I'm Sandy Beal, the Oceanside Park representative for Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park. Our health and safety inspection was conducted, and Rancho San Luis Rey was in noncompliance in March 2021, and also when we had a reinspection in June of 2021. On July 30, 2021, the Fire Department came out and did a three-hour check of the water isolation valves. At that time, we were told a report would be made and submitted within 72 hours. As of today, August 18, have not received any notification of compliance for Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park. Our management company, Star Management, has added the permissive rent increase, starting on our July 2021 rent statements. We understand that managers and owners are permitted to add the permissive rent increase, but only if the park has passed the health and safety inspection. There are many older seniors in our park who are too afraid to question Star Management or the City of Oceanside. Someone should be accountable for the approximately $2,200 that is being collected each month that Rancho San Luis Rey has not passed the inspection. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. So move on to our...
Mr. DeBarro, could you hold on for a second? I was wondering if we could get staff to respond to this, because I asked about this issue, and I understand that the inspection was passed conditionally. And so I would really like to hear... I believe this was from the Fire Department. Is that correct? There were some issues with respect to the water meters? And could you please respond to this?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we do have several people who are here, I don't know if you've noticed, that are here that are going to be speaking to this.
Yes. Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We... I'm going to recount what we've done most recently.
Could you speak into the mic? I'm sorry.
Absolutely. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. So in the lead-up, we eventually requested from the management... We requested an inspection to basically show us, do you know where the valves are, and can you operate them? We had, previous to that, received documentation and a certification from a licensed contractor certifying nine valves in the system. And there are actually 24 valves at the park, approximately. And I don't have the records in front of me, so I might be off by one or two numbers here. So we did approximately two to three hours, walked with staff. They identified every valve on a very old map that we had gotten a hold of, and it matched a map that we had received from the management. They know where the valves are. They know how to use them. The valves did not all operate correctly, in our view. The purpose of the inspection was just to certify that they knew where they were and they knew how to use them. And I needed to start there. So we submitted a passing inspection for that, but we, at the same time, submitted a correction notice through our inspection system stating they need to have the system certified, repaired, and working. We've given a period of time of up to a year to get that done, because with 24 valves, the size of the valves, the age of the system, we wanted to work with the management and the ownership to get this done. They have spent, and again, I'm going to have to, off the top of my head here, $20,000 to $30,000 to get the repairs made that we have required them up to this point. So we are continuing to basically require corrections into the system as of right now.
So technically, then, they still haven't passed inspection until all of these things are done?
The inspection that I required from the Fire Department is separate from any code enforcement inspections that are done. There is a gray area, unfortunately, that crosses over. The fire suppression system is mixed in with the domestic system. It's an old way of doing things that is no longer done. Whenever they shut down the water to the domestic system that affects the residents and that we hear about, it shuts down the fire suppression system, the hydrants. That's what I have authority over as the Fire Department.
Okay.
With some pushback and argument from their legal that I have to...
Okay. So this is a question that I have, and this is what's been going back and forth, is that this somehow was hooked into the Fair Practices Commission yearly inspections, and this was included in that. So unless they do pass inspection, the park owner... Park management cannot pass on or get a fee increase, basically a percentage of the CPI and whatever investments that may have happened. So my understanding is it was made part of that inspection?
There's only one thing I can speak to on the code enforcement's inspection process. They must certify that that passes a hydrostatic test every five years. They, meaning the owner of the system, must certify every five years it passes a hydrostatic test. That means it holds pressure, does what it's supposed to do. If it would leak, then we would see it leaking through a pressure drop. That's done by a third-party contractor. And that was performed, and that's on the code enforcement's documentation that they collect. The other thing that's supposed to be done that is sort of separate from that, but the Fire Code addresses, is they're really supposed to maintain this on an annual basis, supposed to have records for it. It's not a mandatory inspection for the Fire Department to do. It's upon... And even Title 19 in the state code requires the owners to maintain the system. We don't have records that they have done so. I don't know if they exist. That's on the owners. We don't have... We do not have an inspection process for that, because it's not a mandatory inspection, and we don't have the resource to do that amongst all the other business that we do. So that's why I say there's gray area. There's some that I have authority over as the Fire Marshal and the Fire Department. There's some that the code enforcement authority has jurisdiction over. There's crossover there. What I have authority and what I care about are the fire hydrants. And they were shutting them down inappropriately without notifying us. I have corrected that. I know that they know how to use the system, but the system is not...
The residents would be outwater if one of them didn't work, the entire system stopped.
So it's even more complicated than that, unfortunately. The valves... You can isolate a block here and there in the park. There are valves in other areas around especially the perimeter. You can't isolate... I couldn't even tell you the numbers. You can't isolate a third or a fourth or a half of the park in some instances, depending on where the break is. It's a very poorly designed system. It's an old system. It's breaking down. But in my personal view as the Fire Marshal, if the system is in operating condition the way it was originally designed, I believe we can solve a fair majority of the problems. And that's what I'm working for in the authority that I have.
Thank you. And Mr. Mellon, and I'm sorry that I'm taking this time, but it's been going on for a while. We do not have authority... The City Council does not have authority over this issue with respect to the Fair Practices Commission and the yearly inspections. That is that commission, and they have final decision-making with respect to that. So what can we do? And did they really pass inspection? Because it sounds like they shouldn't have.
Mayor, I'll have to review it with the Code Enforcement Division. Obviously, it's not on the agenda tonight, and we can't really be deliberating about it to this extent. So my advice would be, we will get with the people we need to get with administratively at the city. I understand the city manager's out till Monday. I know we want to brief her on it, too. So we've already started the discussion of briefing Deanna when she returns on Monday. There's sort of a partial pass, as I understand it. They've passed the Fire Marshal's inspection with conditions. And so where that leaves them in terms of the permissive rent increase, I'll have to investigate further and get back to you. But you're correct. It's not this body's decision.
Right. Okay. But it is a decision by the Fair Practices Commission that is... I see Ms. Hines here from the Neighborhood Services, who does work with the Fair Practices Commission. So if you could take notes, because we are going to have more people speaking. Thank you very much.
Judy Wilson. And we do have two podiums. So as I call your name, feel free to come on down, to be followed by Robert Markley, to be followed by Shelley Parker, to be followed by Tim Varner.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Sanchez. Mayor Sanchez, you've been an amazing person for our park. And I wanted to just tell you that we really appreciate you.
I just want to just tell you, this is as clear as mud to me. You know, I don't understand how one thing can happen. And, you know, so please give us all the information. You're on the record. And we do have Ms. Hines here, who will be taking notes.
Great. Well, mine is more of a personal story, so you can get a feeling for us old people, what really happens to us. I, of course, live in Rancho San Luis Rey, and there's a sizable, at this time, sinkhole built behind in front of my home. People can fall there and get hurt. It blends with the color of the road. So something needs to be done. And I'm agile, and I've nearly fallen twice. So the park put out some orange cones, and they also put out some caution tape. Well, isn't that just bandy? But for me, it's a little bit off-putting, because it's still been there a month later, and I'm still waiting for repair. So I've got this big old hole in the front of my yard. And this all began, actually, in my home in September of 2020, with the pipes breaking. And it was repaired supposedly, but then this year in July, it exploded again. So I've gone to the manager to no avail. I'm concerned about the loss of my home, and I'd like to live in a safe environment.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Robert Markley. I live at 200 North El Camino Real, Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park. This park was the subject of an annual park inspection by the city... A city inspector. This is not the fire part of it. The city ordinance, 16B, which includes the requirement for an inspection, also requires a park pass their inspection before a permissive rent increase can be imposed on homeowners. Rancho San Luis Rey had their inspection, but to date has not passed, even after a reinspection. Yet, the park management company, Star Management, has imposed the permissive rent increase on the homeowners, in fact, giving the finger to the residents and to the city. I ask that some sort of sanction be imposed on the arrogant Star Management Company for their willful violation of a longstanding city ordinance. Maybe a few days, and this slammer for the park manager will get their attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Listen, I know that you're all... You are very frustrated over this issue. If you could hold off your applause until the very end. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Shelley Parker, to be followed by Tim Varner, to be followed by Sandra Martinez, to be followed by Alma Siskosmith.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I'm Shelley Parker. I'm speaking as an individual homeowner in Rancho San Luis Rey. In light of the Fire Marshal's report, I just want to say, I really don't think that they've actually tried to do what they needed to do. They may have said that they have spent money. The repair people that come out are residential repair. It is not a commercial repair company, drain runners. And I just don't understand how they can be allowed to charge people when they did not pass the inspection. And it has gotten very confusing. They did not put it out, but they will allow you to not pay. If you go in and protest, you don't have to pay the increase, but that's... It isn't given to everybody. It's only if you go in and challenge them. So we have some statements where people have paid. We have some people that have not. Our monthly billing statements are pretty horrendous. We have had 25, at least 25 breaks with our water system in the last 18 months. And there are times when hours and hours and hours of water run out into the drains in the sewer. And I know that we were voted in Oceanside, one of the best water conservation cities. And it is pretty horrendous when you see all this water going down the drain. Now, the other night, Thursday, right in front of my house, it happened. It was a comedy of errors. They couldn't figure out how to isolate, so they opened up all the valves and let them run. And the management feels that in an emergency, which they deemed this, that it was her job to come within 30 minutes to see what was going on. It took her an hour, and only when she was called, and then she just shut down the park. And so, yes, we're frustrated. We get that you don't probably have authorization over this, but we need to be heard, and Star Management doesn't even speak to us. They lied to us about what is happening. We were told a fire hydrant was hit. It wasn't. We were told a valve was run over. It wasn't. And so they can't even respect us enough to actually tell us the truth. And when you call the office, they don't answer the phone, because they don't know what to say to us. Anyway, thank you so much for your time. We very much appreciate you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Varner. I'm here to talk about the homeless. But before I start, I live in the park, too. I'm, you know, a little older than I look. But we've been there 18 months, and literally, we've had an unplanned water shut-off at least a dozen times, and probably a dozen times where they've shut it off. And some of these have lasted overnight. I've never... That's more water shut-offs in my entire life. It's just mind-boggling. Anyway, I want to talk about the homeless problem. First of all, in our park, we've got them wandering through the park, using the pool, in the club.
using the pool, in the clubhouse. And then we have a unique situation. None of us are owners. So unless the management will press charges or call the police, they're kind of handcuffed. So that's our unique problem. But it's everybody's problem. I mean, how many people here drove here without seeing a homeless person? Okay? It's everywhere. You guys have a huge job, like every city council in the whole country. I know there's mental health problems, drug problems, but I want to talk about military homeless. Okay? I think that we owe them some help. And I think that maybe if we reach out to the military bases around here-- they've got a ton of room. They've got housing. Maybe so they could take in some of their own. I've always heard them say, "Once a Marine, always a Marine. Once a sailor, always a sailor." I don't know what the Army says. But something like that. Maybe we could get them over there. And maybe a little bit of structure. Maybe give them a little job to do. Give them a house. You know, give them a place to stay. Give them some food. Give them some chores. Maybe we could turn these guys around. I mean, and I think that our military, which is funded by our federal government, owes these guys a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Martinez, to be followed by Alma Cisco Smith.
Hi, everybody. Glad to be here, and thank you for being here. I want to talk more about our community, what's been going on the last year and a half. I don't know if any of you went to the San Diego County Board of Supervisor meeting yesterday or heard about it, but there are a lot of people that are pretty unhappy with what's been going on. Now, you guys have-- Oceanside has been pretty responsible as far as things go. But I really want to just kind of address that a little further. When all this started about a year and a half ago-- Peter, you were out canvassing in my neighborhood, and we had a very brief chat. You probably don't remember. And I kind of said, "What's going on? This is a bunch of hoo-ha," you know? And the response I received-- and it's not just from him. I've heard it from a lot of politicians-- is it's about, "We need the money. We have to follow these mandates to get the money." And I get it. You do need the money. You want the money. But you know where the money comes from? Comes from me. You're not getting anything that you didn't already have. It comes from me. It comes from you. It comes off of our backs and our hard work. And yet, you're getting grants and funding, but we paid for it. Just like I got my $600 check that probably cost me $20,000. I mean, it's ridiculous. And the thing is, once you start accepting money, you keep taking it forever. And so what's happened in Oceanside is because we have now lost so many of our small businesses, landlords aren't collecting their rents, renters can't pay their rents because they're not working, and the cycle goes on and on. And the more you get into that habit and that situation, the harder it is to get yourself out of it. At some point, you just have to say no and stop taking the money. Stop taking it. You got to step up. One of the things-- I don't know if you know about this-- last week, we had the school board meeting. And the school board-- people were really upset at some of the mandates that are being required on students. And the people said, "We're just going to take our kids out of the school." And you know what the board response was? "That's fine. We'll get the money by having illegal students." Really? That's really rude and disrespectful and a bunch of hoo-ha. You know, it's just not right. And so I know it's not in your purview to stand up for things, but you need to stand up, even if it isn't, because you're setting the example. You don't control the school board, but you are part of the community. We need you to have our backs. We go and say our piece, and they don't give a hoot. We really need you to stand up. I want-- this is something I just want you to think about. I want you to name to me that one time in history where the side that was shutting down small businesses, taking instructions from politicians, being influenced by large corporations, making mandatory experimental medical procedures on people, and knocking on doors from compliance was the good guy.
Could you wrap things up?
I am. Thank you so much. Please stand up for us. We really need your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alma Cisco Smith?
Thank you, honorable mayor, deputy mayor, and city council. I am president of the Library Board of Trustees. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you of the Oceanside Public Library and on behalf of the Board of Trustees. The board felt it was timely, having just completed its fourth-quarter review, to engage with council, as we were absolutely astounded by the library's recent accomplishments during the most horrific year and a half we've experienced. If the following achievements have not reached your eye or line of sight or our communities, this is the purpose of me speaking here. In spite of COVID-2020, it was a phenomenal, in terms of the library's achievements, the staff pivoting within the first several weeks. They exceeded some areas and even began new services. In order to be brief, there are two major information sectors I want to discuss with you. One is impact data, and the other is the interface with city councils on goals. For example, 75,000 eBooks and audiobooks circulated, 792 tutoring sessions with adult family literacy, 7,000 new digital library cards, Vista Unified School District joining Oceanside Unified School District, and Set Up to Succeed initiative that allows all students to be able to use their student ID for library resources, eight paid new interns, 116 volunteer teen partners for over 850 hours, 40,000 items circulated for home deliveries. And I hear many of my neighbors just clapping, clapping every day. With respect to the city council goals interface, though the library has its own strategic plans, goals, objectives, and actions, I want you to know, if you haven't noticed, that there is a great interface with the city council goals. In particular, almost all of the activities of those strategic plans of the library, there are three in particular of the council's goals which are significantly addressed by the library board and by the staff. And I'll name three of the five. Build partnerships for job creation and economic growth. Improve quality of life, cultural and recreational opportunities. Encourage citizen involvement for a shared sense of community. And there are three library achievements that meet these goals, particularly I want to mention. First, through partnership with the California Libraries Network, Opel engaged in the initiative for strategic strategies to cultivate racial equity and inclusion, called CRAI, using a racial equity toolkit for internal reach and outreach to identify areas of focus for staff first and community next. That tool helped to solidify their need to be more to be addressed in the Landis Park neighborhood. A second was another grant received by the California State Library. There have been over $300,000 in grants that this staff-- these staff members have looked for and have achieved in order to help our city be the best that it can be. And I just want you all to know that.
Thank you very much, Alma.
There are no more registered speakers.
Okay. Well, then you guys can clap again, though. Okay. Well, we're done, then, for-- nothing else on the agenda. Okay. So any comments by council members? Word.
Just quickly. For the Rancho San Luis Rey residents-- that's my district. So I'm going to be working directly with the city attorney and the fire marshal, and really get to the bottom of this. You guys should not be having your water turned off like that. I've met Star Management when they took over to introduce myself, and they were-- you guys are stuck with them for now, but I promise you, if there's something that we can do that's not a civil matter as a city, we're going to do it to help you guys out, okay? Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah. And I also wanted to add to that, that we'll be working together on this. So thank you very much for coming. Thank you. Well, we had a couple of things happen this week. First of all, we had our reopening of our senior nutrition program, the lunches over at the senior center on Country Club Lane. So you can start going there again. Yay. It was a great little event there. This coming Saturday, it's a grand opening of the Oceanside Aquatic Center at El Corazon. So please come on by. It's at 9:00. Okay, so some of the speeches-- hopefully, they'll be short. They start at 9:00. But then there's going to be some really great activities afterwards. So please get there by 9:00, especially to find parking. And tomorrow, there's a dog facility study pop-up[1750.04]